I call this committee the whole meeting to order on Monday, November 10th, 2025 at 6:00 PM. If we could please take a roll call.
Jason Janzik.
Sure.
Dee Darling here.
Bridges Sanlin.
Here.
Mindy Hartman is absent. Julie Jettie.
Here.
Catherine Potter.
Here.
And Stacy Salt is absent.
Okay, next up, we have the acceptance of the agenda. Items for discussion may be added to the agenda at the start of the meeting at the request of the superintendent or any board member upon majority approval of those members present. Does any board member have an item to add tonight? Hearing none. Uh, next up, we have community input. I don't think anybody signed up, so we'll skip this part. Uh, next up, we have the approval of previous meeting minutes, the approval of the minutes from the October 20th, 2025 meeting. Are we all good with putting that? Yep. Our items for discussion tonight are, first up is 5.1, the status of the review of bills and treasurer's report. Mr. Shepherd.
Yes, good evening. Due to the tight timeline between the October, a regular board meeting and our next set of meetings this month, we were not able to get the treasurer's report completed. It was actually completed this morning, so it will be available for the board meeting. With the bills, we are trying to consolidate the amount of times, consolidate bill reports. As you know, we are moving towards Skyward January 1. And so we're trying to capture as much as we can with payments prior to the end of the year, and we want to do that as efficiently as possible. So in an effort to try to capture as many payments, we're going to do a bills report in, one in November, and then we're going to hold off the bills report again in December until the regular board meeting. That'll be the only time, with the exception of other times where the meetings are bunched together, that we will be doing it like that. Otherwise, a normal routine will be bills and treasurer's report at committee hall.
Any questions? Next up, we have the fiscal year 25 audit. Mr. Shepherd.
Yes, we are pleased to be able to present to you the audit for fiscal year 2025. And I think if you've had an opportunity to go through the report, you'll notice that I think it really does speak volumes of the strength of the district currently with where we at with our financial position. Just a little background on the audit. You know that government bodies are required to have an audit conducted annually. This is also directly related to our strategic plan goal five. The district chose once again to create the comprehensive annual financial review. That's the booklet that you have in front of you. The AFR, the annual financial report, is the Excel document that was in your board packet. That is what we actually submit to the state. So only the annual financial report is required by law, but the district has made it a practice to really take a deep dive into its finances and present the public with the comprehensive report. The District 26 Business Department uses this annual audit as a guide, and you'll see in our slideshow just how that's occurred over the last four or five years. And it's our guide for continual growth and improvement. We do have a representative from our auditing firm, Lauterbach &amp; Amon, who is here tonight. And Mr. Paul Rosario will guide the board through key parts of the audit and highlight some of the strengths of the district. So at this time, I'd like to welcome Paul up to the podium, and he can review the comprehensive report and also answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, David. Hi. My name is Paul Rosario. I'm the audit manager at Lauterbach &amp; Amon. I'm here this evening to walk you through the pieces of required communication that we really published related to the fiscal year 2025. To start off, I wanted to have two thank yous. The first one to the board for allowing me to speak today. And also, I wanted to give a special thank you to David Shepherd and his team. An audit process requires a great deal of time and effort outside the scope of the normal job functions, and we are very appreciative of those efforts as they set forth the audit process and also to provide everything on a timely basis in order for us to be sent tonight. So without further ado, I would like to present to you the annual comprehensive financial report at a high level. And if you have any questions at any time, please feel free to interrupt me and ask any questions. The first thing I wanted to start off with is on page 16. This is called the Government Finance Officers Association Certificate of Achievement. This award is typically based on the annual comprehensive financial report, and it's based on last year's reporting. And we anticipate that the district will be receiving the same award for this year. So overall, congratulations. On page 29, 19 to 21, sorry. This is the independent auditor's report. This clearly establishes the line in which we are participating in the reporting of the annual financial report. Primarily that the management's responsibility is the preparation and the fair representation of the financial statements. And Lauterbach &amp; Amon, as the auditors, are to generate an opinion on those financial reports. In our opinion, we have expressed an unmodified opinion, which is the cleanest form of opinion and the highest level of assurance that we can issue. This also states that the financial statements are free from material misstatement and that the district has sound internal controls over their final financial reporting system. On pages 23 to 30, these are the management discussion and analysis, also known as the MDNA. This is a great narrative summary for the fiscal year's financial highlights. And we understand that the financial statements can be pretty daunting and hard to comprehend. So this report is simplified to the way that you can actually get a summary of a high level that has been going on within the district. And it provides words, charts, and graphs to help illustrate what has happened throughout the year. So whenever you have a chance, I would highly encourage the board to read the section at their leisure. On page 32 and 33, these are the fund level income statements for the government funds. Primarily, the general fund that we wanted to bring up to the board's attention is that the operating income for this year ended up being $40.5 million with an ending fund balance of $15.7 million, which shows that the district has a very healthy fund balance and is continuing to operate at an optimal level. Okay, on page 44, these are the notes to the financial statements, where you can see the following information for the district at a more granular level. It will write budgetary information, investments, leases, capital assets, long-term debt, as well as any other information that will be pertinent to the financial statements. And lastly, I would like to direct the board to page 81. This is the required supplementary information, where you see the budget to actual reporting as well as supplemental schedules in order for you to plan for the future. Overall, this is the, overall, this is the, basically, the annual financial, comprehensive financial report. And I wanted to see if the board had any questions before we move on to the next.
Regarding our fund balance and for a district, do you make a recommendation if that fund balance is too low or too high?
Definitely. Typically, it's more if it's lower because of the fact that with that, it's based on historical information that's presented and along with current activities. So if the fund balance tends to be lower or in the negative, that's a sign that something must have gone wrong where the, maybe the expenses exceeded the revenue that was being received. So there has to be some action being taken to the district. But with a margin of $15.7 million, you have a pretty good buffer in that regard. And then it's also a good idea with partnering that with the required supplemental information that you have, you can see the budget to actual, so that you can plan for the future in case of any emergency. You can increase that margin as well.
Okay, thank you. Right.
So the next piece of communication that we wanted to present is the management letter. The purpose of this letter is to convey any internal control recommendations.
Paul, just so the board is aware, the management letter is in the separate packet.
Thank you, David. Sorry. So this basically conveys any internal control recommendations, best practices that we see in the industry, and any upcoming Gatsby pronouncements that we'll maybe have to incorporate in the, in it, in the report. So the current items that we wanted to point out, first and foremost, is the IT security awareness and monitoring of emerging risk. This is, we're presenting it not because of the fact that there has been an instance where a cyber attack has occurred with the district. What we wanted to present with this is just a consideration for the board and anyone that's in the financial department to actually take into consideration the risks that are associated, especially with the emerging times. So we provided some points to recommend as part of your operations, and hopefully they'll take that into consideration to prevent any particular disasters that may occur at the district.
I have a.
Yes.
I have a question about that. These recommendations, are they, are they being recommended because they're not currently in place? Or are they recommendations as best practice?
It's really best practice. We use this note across all districts because we wanted to bring this to the attention. So these recommendations are pretty much a wide umbrella scope. But when you, when your team actually goes through and does a deep dive into the operations, they might be able to find the pinpoints of risk they may want to address and then establish a policy and procedure over that particular risk.
Okay, and then along the course of, of the audit process, if your Lauterbach &amp; Amon team came across one of these, is that something that you point out specifically to our management team or?
Yes, during, well, during, within the course of the audit scope, we were able, if we were able to come across an item that is worthy of the management's attention, then we'd bring it up to them so that he can find some remediation in order to address that risk. But in terms of the overall scope and a really deep dive into that, that's more of the management responsibility to be able to do that. But within the scope, we will definitely let you know.
Thank you.
So I do have a question too. So of the recommendations, are we doing some of these things, any of these things?
I want you to hold that question just for a couple of minutes. We will address that.
Okay.
Okay, and then the next bullet point that I want to bring to your attention is the accounting software being outdated. I think this was something that was brought up last time, and we were already in discussion with David and his team, and we are aware that the, with Skyward coming up in January, this is going to be addressed. So once this, this has been implemented, then we will move this recommendation, and it'll be a lot cleaner going forward.
And then the last item was the funds over budget. So we wanted to bring up the items that we noted where the expenditures were higher than anticipated for the, according to the approved budget. And if you have any particular questions, we will direct to David, or we can also refer back to the required supplementary information to help you in determining what the the causes were associated with that. Okay. And then for the upcoming items that are indicated in the management letter, I wanted to bring your attention Gatsby 103 and 104. Those are primarily report writing items that will need to be addressed next year. But with regards to where the board needs to be participating in that, it's not really necessary. But if you have any particular questions, you can reach out to us or to David with any concerns over those. And without further ado, we'll open up to any questions, any additional question you may have.
Hearing none, sounds like you answered everything.
Right. Thank you, Paul. So just a couple other comments on our, our audit. And we are going to get to that question of what we currently do for our, our tech procedures. But I just wanted to give the board, again, a brief overview about how my team uses the, the annual audit report. So the slide, this slide shows the prior audit action results. And you can see from year to year, starting in FY '21, we had quite the list of, of items that we have been making improvements over the last five years, four years. And so with each passing year, we're happy to report that the, the list of improvements is getting fewer and fewer because we were really front-loaded when I first came on board in fiscal year '21. So really, this is really our, our continuous improvement plan every year. We review this and figure out what we can do to constantly strive to be a better department. So as noted, the FY '24 audit action items, the accounting software, that was on our report. That will be taken off because we are moving to Skyward January 1. Fund over budget was also in the FY '24 report, as it was in the most recent one, because, as the board will remember, these were due to expected drawdowns with some of our funds. In FY '24, Fund 30 was over budget due to unexpected interest payments. But for the most part, if we're over budget, it's because it's a planned drawdown of our, our funds. So the FY '25 audit recommendation, the IT security awareness, I saw this as part of our, our management letter, and I made a beeline towards Mr. Fitzsimmons' office and had him review these items. And I, I don't want to speak for Mr. Fitzsimmons, but in talking with him, we pretty much do almost all of these particular items with all of our, our various programming. So we do have policies for password strength. Multi-factor authentication is something that I know we implement because I am constantly booted out of some of our systems, and I'm constantly prodded to put in a new authentication code. And so we are regularly working on ensuring our vendor contracts are addressing security. We keep in touch with them as well in regards to any data breaches there might be. And I believe as part of our staff training, there is a training on, on phishing that's part of our yearly, yearly training. So again, we'll be going back with this report to Mr. Fitzsimmons, really diving in detail and see if there's anything else we can do. But for the most part, I was pleasantly surprised to hear from him that a lot of this is, is already in place. I always like to show this slide after the FY '25 or after the fiscal year audit. This is our fund balance history, and again, it speaks volumes based on where the district was to where it is now. You'll see our fund balance chart is multicolored in 2025. The orange color represents our funds that are currently held in capital. So the blue is really what our, our operating fund balance is, not including capital. So our fund balance totals for 10, Fund 10, 20, 30, 40, and 50 is $20.3 million. So a nice, healthy, healthy position for those funds. So FY '25 and beyond, again, the business office team strives to continually improve and keep the district on solid financial ground. And a special shout out to my team, I could not do it without all their hard work. We look at this report as an opportunity to continue to grow and move towards excellence in our field. We continue to thank Lauterbach &amp; Amon for their work and support of the district. They not only tell us what we are doing incredibly well, but they also pull us aside and very gently tell us what we could be doing to improve, and we greatly appreciate that with each passing year. And we do, just a side note for FY '26. We do anticipate there could be some delays with the FY '26 audit as we get accustomed to the new financial software, the reports that are required, and really making sure that all of our data is carrying over that in the way that we expect it to. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I just want to say thank you, Mr. Shepherd and team, for all your hard work, and Mr. Rosario for keeping him in line. I'm sure there was a lot of that, but no, thank you.
Yeah. Is, it's just, we renewed the contract last year with, and was it a two-year contract or?
I think it was a five-year.
Oh, five, okay, so we're in the.
So this finished first year, yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Have a nice evening. Thank you for coming out and presenting. As usual, great job, Mr. Shepherd and team. Is that everything? Okay. All right, the next item for discussion is the press plus policy update. Dr. Thomas.
Okay, so as promised, we got our fall packet. This is the one that we have to have approved for the procedure project to get started. And it looks like a lot, it is a lot, but the vast majority of these have single word or very small changes. Typically, those have been pulled out and just automatically approved, but sometimes it changes single word to a different word, not like the letter or the, the word one to the number one, so they threw them all in there. So there's a few that have more changes than that, but just to let everyone know, most of it is pretty minor. So we will work our way through here. So the first one is 2:120, board member development. And that on page one, there is one minor change. They removed a line that you can see there kind of on the middle of the first page. And that is the only change in the entire policy. So on that, we recommend accepting press.
Are we good with that?
To put on the consent agenda?
Okay.
The next one, 2:150 committees, again, very minor change. This is on page two. They added the word civil on the middle of the page toward the right, criminal and civil offenses. That is the only update. So again, we're recommending accepting press.
Is the board good with consent?
2:270, discrimination harassment on the basis of race, color, and national origin prohibited. This, again, has an even more minor change on page one. The word incident or in, in, I'm not even sure what they have, but it's incidents now instead of whatever they had there before. They had an EES on the end, which doesn't make any sense to me, but anyway, that is the minor change.
Is the board good with consent? Okay, we move to consent, please.
And I didn't say this, but I should say this. When there's a minor change, there's often also changes to the legal references, so those will be done automatically as we update. Okay, 410, another, this is fiscal and business management, race, color, and national origin prohibited. On page one, again, a minor change. They changed the word before to the word by December 1st.
Board good with consent? Hearing yes? Okay.
430 is revenue and investments. Now we finally have something to look at. So this is a change, there's a couple changes on page four and five about the ICRA, the Illinois Community Reinvestment Act, and what districts, how we can or cannot put our funds in different places. There's two lines, number two you'll see, and then underneath the one through six, there's some additions there as well. We did have Mr. Shepherd look at this to make sure that this was aligned with what we are doing or should be doing, and we said yes. So we would again recommend accepting press.
Is the board good with consent? Consent, please.
Okay. The next one is 4:80, and that's accounting and audits. On page one, you'll see some updates there. And this has to do with the audit, how it gets submitted to ISB essentially is how this is done, and the AFR. So some of this comes directly from the auditors and goes directly to ISB. That was a, that was new. And again, we had Mr. Shepherd look at that one, and he said, yes, that's the appropriate process. So we recommend updating.
Board good with consent?
Shouldn't it, like, shouldn't it say the superintendent or designate? In the green area?
Yeah, I mean, we could say or designate. This one ultimately is, the superintendent has to make sure that happens. Anything that gets submitted like that has to go in, but it really is Mr. Shepherd who makes sure that happens. So we, we could add a or designate.
I guess it doesn't matter, but it seems like that, down there on most of the things. And then it says down below there, the superintendent or designated annually prepared.
I think it's just though the overall superintendent's responsibility. I'd go to consent.
Okay, 5:10 is equal employment opportunity and minority recruitment. And on page one, you'll see there's the addition of a line there, or use of district issued equipment to record such types of violence. This has to do with classes that you cannot discriminate. You have to follow the Equal Opportunity Employment Act, and you can't discriminate against somebody who has used district equipment to record violence, which makes sense. So we would recommend approving that as well.
Is the board good with consent?
Okay, 5:90, abuse in neglected children reporting. There is a language change on page one based on a change in the definition of the law. So they changed the word pornography to sexual abuse material and then put the reference from the law that that comes from. So we again recommend accepting.
Is the board with, good with consent?
Okay. 5:100, it actually, although it says the policy and footnotes are updated, the policy isn't updated. The only thing actually updated is a legal reference that shows up within the policy. So that, again, we just recommend accepting press to add that legal reference. It's in the body of the, of the policy itself as opposed to just at the end, which is a little different than sometimes.
Are we good with consent?
And 5:200, on page one, you'll see a minor change here. And this has to do with compensating breastfeeding mothers for reasonable time, reasonable time to express breast milk. That same line is going to show up in a minute on 5300 as well, and we would recommend accepting that.
Board good with consent?
Okay, and then 5:280, duties and qualifications. There's a change on the first page there from certified or certificated to licensed, referring to staff. And then on the second page, talks about a bus driver permit holder who is a service member is what the, who is a service member was added. So again, we would recommend accepting those.
Board good with consent? Yes.
5:300, schedules and employment year. And this is on the first page, or that same line, and compensates them for a reasonable time needed to express breast milk, same as 5200, so we would recommend accepting that as well.
Good with consent?
6:20, this is school year and calendar, a school year, calendar, and day. On page one, there is a minor change, the word shall to may, and then legal references are updated. So we recommend.
Okay, board good with consent?
6:40, page one, there's updates defining the timeline to review, kind of up at the bottom of the page there. It used to be a little more open-ended periodically, and they want that to be every two years. And then just that, that it has to be substantially related to the achievement of the important objective for the class or activity. This is about having single gender classes. And if you have those, need to review why you have those. That doesn't happen very often. It happens, I think, in the fifth grade with our education that we do for growth and development.
Is the board good with consent?
Okay. 6:60, this one has a little bit more in there. So 6:60, there is a change. They struck a line on the first page and basically took that line and expanded it into number two and added in number two. I'm sorry, I don't know if I, I said it, this is 660 curriculum content. So that is the expansion that they did there on page one. And then down, a little bit further down on the page, there's just, they're updating a little bit the grades with which we do some of these things and the timeline for that. So you'll see like in kindergarten, kindergarten through eighth grade for 2026, 27. That gets changed a little bit under number five, it's grades three through eight. And I should also mention, we did have Ms. Rivera also review this as well. But those are the first two, as well as Mrs. Williams, because on the next page, there are, there's some information about health education and some other issues that are also related to STEM. Again, a few things are stricken. These are all in relation to updates to the laws is why these adjustments were made.
Is the board good with consent?
Okay, and on this one, there's also a question that the board needs to answer. And the question is about including information about the curriculum. So if we include the, if we're recommending we answer yes to the question, you answer yes to the question that they have. If IASB has information about the Irish famine. So if we cover the Irish famine in our curriculum, which we do, one period, 45 minutes, then they recommend using the alternate language that IASB has recommended. If we don't, which we do use that, if we don't talk about the Irish famine, because it's not required, but we don't talk about it, then we should use the standard language. So we're recommending that the board say yes, that we would use the alternate language because we do include the Irish famine in our curriculum.
Is the board with consent?
Wait, what number then is that going to appear as? Do you know? I'm trying to back it up there.
Uh, let's see.
660?
This is still 660, yep.
616?
Let me go back.
I'm so sorry to Ash, but I can't find it.
It is under sixteen, question one. Thank you. Okay. Somehow it flipped my documents upside down here, so let me slide the right one back to six one thirty. Well, I'm somehow out of order, but that's okay. Six one thirty is program for gifted. The change in here, we are recommending accepting press is kind of an unfortunate change. They took out the language that was related to the state doing a request for proposals for funding because they're not planning to fund gifted education. So they basically are saying, we can do gifted education in, within the parameters of our own budget. Which we knew was coming.
Okay, do, um, do we have a plan in place that thought we're going to potentially get funds together for that? That's Title IV is no longer an option. We do at some point? We don't?
Well, I would say.
Um, it's part of the work of what we're doing, right? When we audited our software and cutting back there, right? And just getting a little bit tighter with the belt in the teaching and learning department and ensuring that we are spending funds in areas that align with our goals. And that's why we looked at redundancy within the technology software, right? And so the, the benefit for us here is that, remember, we looked at a, it's gifted and enrichment. And so it's embedded into our curriculum. It's embedded as part of our MTSS process. It's embedded as part of the win time at the elementary level, which doesn't cost us extra. And at the junior high, they have the advanced placement classes, which again, doesn't cost extra. What we wound up using Title IV funding for is a lot of the extra materials. So looking at novels that help extend, you know, student learning, activities, things of that nature. And so we'll just have to shift that towards our teaching and learning district funds. And just being strategic with how we're using our, our funding within the department. So yes, we have a game plan.
Thank you.
Is the board good with moving that to consent? Yeah.
Okay, six one sixty is English learners. And the change here is on page one, adding the word guardian, kind of toward the bottom of the page. That's the only change. So we're recommending accepting that.
Are we all good with consent?
Okay, next one is six two ten instructional materials. This is another one that has a question on it. Let's see. So the question in here is, a board does not have the capacity or desire to approve all instructional materials, may use a following alternative. And we aren't actually recommending yes to this. So that, I'll just read this out loud, the superintendent shall recommend to the board for consideration and adoption of all textbooks and primary instructional materials and shall include the following information. The rest hasn't really been changed. So the difference, the distinction here is that's exactly what our process is right now. So any major curriculum adoption always comes to the board, that would stay the same. Any adoption of materials that is thirty five thousand dollars or more comes to the board, that doesn't change. What this prevents is, we literally can have at any given time, hundreds of supplemental curricular materials that might be for a small group of students or a small one grade level or a group of special ed students. We have those happening all the time, and those are usually pretty minor, you know, it could be a hundred dollars worth of curricular materials. But if we don't take the alternate language on this, it means every single one of those very minor things that we purchased has to come to the board, and I think it would just jam the board up with constant review process. Everything big that comes to the board, as it does now, still would come to the board. And anything that we're buying, even if it's not part of the core curriculum or primary instructional material, if it's over the threshold, it still has to come to the board. That's policy. It's all the little stuff that, that we routinely approve and purchase.
You know, for textbook adoptions, we typically have a group of certified staff review everything. You use it in their classrooms for six months or something. But this doesn't say that, but is that like in your, your procedure book that you do something that that stated where that is your, your desire to bring in a committee or something?
It's part of our current practice. It is best practice, and it will be part of our procedure somewhere around June of next year. Okay, so yes.
That wouldn't be part of policy though, because that's, we're just trusting the administration to do with what they want in that case.
This looks like, you know, you could, the superintendent could just, you know, pick a math textbook from his buddy or something and present it to the board or something, you know, but okay.
Right, but you couldn't, because that would be a primary instructional material. So anything like that has to come to the board. And those are usually hundreds of thousands of dollars that we're spending, so that definitely is over the threshold. So it doesn't change our current practice with what comes to the board, I guess, is what.
Are we good with consent?
Okay, the next one is six two eighty and, did I, yeah, six two eighty grading and promotion. Sorry, there's so many, it's hard for me to keep track of them. So this one is unusual. This one was included only for review and monitoring. It's part of the five year cycle that they do. And actually, because we've actually just reviewed and updated this back in, I want to say it was, this was in January, I believe, when we did the update of all the policies. Ours is actually consistent with the current update for press. So we're not recommending any changes. We recommend we keep the policy just as it is. But we included it because it is a recommendation of press to review and monitor this one. Because it's, it's fallen within the five year cycle. It just happens that we've already updated ours to be consistent. So there's not really a change on this one.
We're good with consent, correct? Yep.
That's just gonna update the adopted.
The adopted date will update. And then if it's not updated between now and five years from now, it'll just circulate back in, in the five year process. Um, the next one is six colon three fifteen, high school credit for students in grade seven or eight. Now, this update doesn't actually apply to us because we don't issue and the high school doesn't issue credit for students in seventh and eighth grade. But because that's where the change was, we went ahead and included this. We're recommending that we do not adopt it. What the high school does right now, they don't grant credit for our students who, for example, maybe are taking algebra or geometry. But they do place them in the correct level that they need to be in. So if they've done geometry, they would then, as a freshman in high school, going to the next math up. Similar with students coming from our dual language program. They don't get credit, say, for Spanish one and two, but they might be placed in Spanish three. So they do start advanced at the place where they should, based on what they've done here. It's just our high school doesn't actually grant high school credit for those courses, but they do the placement accordingly. So again, this came in here and it talks about grade seven and eight. So we didn't want to ignore that, but just wanted to explain that's why we're still recommending that we don't adopt this one.
Okay, I know that we talked about that in, in depth, because I can't wrap my mind around how I, I can't wrap my mind around how this doesn't pertain to D twenty six. Only because I think it does. We have seventh and eighth graders. And so I went to see what D one fifty five has on theirs. And they haven't reviewed, they're late reviewing their policies. But it is basically the same, except the recommendation is, is they're putting in what a high school district is supposed to be. What we're looking at on our screen here. They do say that you would receive, their current one right now says that a student who successfully completes their course for a high school diploma while in grade seven and eight shall receive a good damn a credit for the course that they do.
Right, so.
The credit.
Sorry.
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, like in District three hundred, that has K through twelve, right? If there's a, they have those standards all the way across. We do not have whatever D one fifty five's high school math curriculum is in twenty six or in forty seven or in three, right? So if they pass our algebra class, sorry, excuse me, right? It doesn't mean they're going to get credit in one fifty five. They're just going to get placed into a different algebra class or a different math class as freshmen. Because it's not their math curriculum, it's Ms. Rivera's math curriculum or District twenty six's math curriculum. And so that way, it's not going to transfer. We've had this, the only reason I ask is we get this question a lot in grades late too, or the answer, I'm answering because of that. Like, why doesn't my kid's US history count again as a junior when they took it in eighth grade? It's the same reason. It's not the same, exact same curriculum. So we're not going to give them the credit that they earned in eighth grade for it. Does that make sense?
No, no, it doesn't. No, I, yes, what you're, yes, what you're saying makes sense. But reading through it and saying that what it's saying is, is these certain things have to be met. I know, um, just from talking to Dr. Thomas about it, that no, right now, there isn't anything coordinated in between the two schools, like Cary Grove and, and Cary Junior High. Or there's nothing going on now, but I, I just feel like, why, why prevent it by not having the policy in case? Because nothing says that the district is required to implement it. But I do think the district, okay, the district is not required to implement this. But if something later future comes along, I wouldn't want to not have that policy there.
I get what you're saying. I just, my concern would be is if we have this on the books right now, then there will be a parent that will come to one fifty five's curriculum meetings and say, well, they passed junior high math or they passed junior high US history, how come they're not getting credit for it now? Look at what it says in our policy. If we don't have this in our policy right now, District one fifty five could point and say, District twenty six is not incorporating that. Now, if they ever reach out to us, I would imagine we could revisit this policy. But to have that even open for that conversation, I'd be worried to, that teachers would start asking for, for credit.
And we can't, we can't force the high school to grant credit. If a, if a high school doesn't grant credit, which they've said, we do not grant credit for our high school at your junior high. If they don't grant us credit, there's no way that we can implement this or have this in place. If they were to change their minds and say, okay, now we're going to start granting credit for your Spanish classes, your math classes. Those two that usually pop up. If they were going to actually give us high school credit, then we could go back and add this in. But without the high school saying, yes, we'll give you credit, there's, we can't do anything about this anyway.
Right, and right. But fair enough, the policy says though, if a program is available, if.
But it's not right now.
Not, if it's. I understand what you're saying, like you're saying, because we are more closely with the high school district now to try and, you know, get them ready for high school when they go. But this policy isn't going to go anywhere in press. It's only going to be expanded upon and changed and altered as time goes. So it will be there for us to adopt at any time when we do have those pieces in place in order to be teaching high school level math to our seventh and eighth graders that are accelerated and can get credit. Until we have those pieces in place, it wouldn't apply to us because it's not apples to apples, in my mind.
Can I also add, I just want to clarify, because we've said a couple of times that like the collaboration isn't there. It is, it's just not in the form of credits, right? So we do have collaboration, our students who are in the dual program. They don't start in, let's say, Spanish one to begin with. So our connection that we have with them isn't in relation to credits. And it's in relation to providing students access to different placement levels in the high school, which then gives them different access to college credits. And that's the connection that we have currently with one fifty five. Our service right now is not credit based. Our service right now is supporting students with obtaining those higher level courses. That's the contribution and the connection that we have currently. It's not focused and centered on credits. It's focused and centered on the experience and what courses we can get students access to at the high school level. Then we leave the high school up to determine the credits because that then carries over to college credit as well. So that's just, I just wanted to clarify, there is a connection, a collaboration between the two.
I would like to see our accelerated students though, be given high school classes so that, that do count towards, and then we know, the high school already knows they're already at that level. And like, they're just take, like, yes, they're testing in, but they're not getting the overall picture of where they actually really, really are as far as based on their academics.
For sure. And, and I have been a part of my prior district where students who were a part of the magnet program, they got bused to the high school and they received math right at the high school when they were that higher level. That does come with a cost as well to do that, because you are now increasing the class sizes of the high school. And then you also have to take consideration transportation. So it's a much larger discussion and conversation, definitely something that's, that could be done. What we do have though, is we have teachers who are certified to teach that next level rigorous geometry or, or whatever it might be. And we do collaborate with the high school currently to see what is their curriculum to ensure that we are in alignment with their curriculum if they're receiving that, let's say, geometry here at Cary Junior High.
I would also add, when we're looking beyond high school, I'm much less worried about them getting high school credit for it as I am the access to those higher, more advanced classes. Because if they're doing that as a freshman and a sophomore, that opens up the world of dual credit college classes that the high school offers, AP classes that the high school offers at an earlier age, which is much more beneficial in going to college, walking in with credits, walking in with classwork done. The high school credit to us doesn't really make a difference. It's the placement so that they can access when we're looking beyond, if they're going beyond high school. I think is the critical part.
Add one last thing. If they get their credits here, that does also take away from the experience at the high school as well, right? Because then it's like, oh, I got those credits at the junior high. But they're in high school, and that's a different life experience freshman to senior year. And so you really do want them to get those credits at the high school level to experience that learning that happens freshman to senior year. So it's, there's arguments on both sides, right? Pluses and minuses on both sides. I get what you're saying. It's definitely something we continue to look into doing in a way that we can continue to enrich their learning without taking away from that high school experience.
So it's not like they're going to have to repeat the same.
Correct, they wouldn't have to.
Right, because they're, because they're placed in a higher one, once they go to high school. It's not a repeat of what they took in junior. Okay.
Whether we're talking math, whether we're talking literacy, whether, yes, it's, I don't want to use the word tracking, but there's a track.
Absolutely. And some students are, they still need that support, right? And so some students are, hey, you need to revisit this mathematical concept or something like that, so. But they're not all placed there. I'm just looking at one fifty five, there's alg, there's intermediate algebra, algebra two with trig, honors algebra two with trig, so there's a bunch of different options for freshmen.
And there's a lot of informational exchange that happens behind the scenes between D twenty six, all of our elementary districts, right? In the high schools. So for example, they've already reached out to us to ask for test scores. So we've, we've shared test scores and we're talking about current students going into freshman year. And they reached out to us regarding the students that they have currently who are freshmen, right? And so they want all that up to date information. So we share IAR, we've shared STAR in the past, we've shared this year IREDDI. We have teachers that collaborate with our teachers to get actual now observational information. Our students who are in the dual program take a placement test that Ms., not Ozma Kramer, that Ms. Kramer is working with the high school on, where they will be taking an assessment that will help determine that placement. So there's a lot of behind the scenes collaboration. By no means is it a, the student took this class and now we're just going to plop them here. There's, there's a lot of dialogue and professional conversations happening behind the scenes. By no means is it a, the student took this class and now we're just going to plop them here. There's, there's a lot of dialogue and professional conversations happening behind the scenes.
Are we good with consent?
It, it still makes no sense to me. I'm, I'm just, I just got to be real with everybody. It, it doesn't make sense to me at all. Wait, but what is, what is it? What happens when you get put in those higher placing classes than you, at the high school than you?
So for example, you're placed in Spanish three as a freshman because you've gone through dual language and you have proficiency and they're one and two, you're placed in three. So maybe you do Spanish three, your freshman year, Spanish four, your sophomore year. Then you might have an opportunity to do a dual credit class with, say, MCC that they're offering at the high school. Where now you're getting college credit for a class you're taking as a junior in high school. That counts as a college course for whatever university you're going to.
Not everybody goes to university though either, so. I, I, I know that there's not a program currently, again, but maybe some, I mean, some students would want to graduate high school earlier or something. Do you know what I mean by getting that credit? I'm just saying, I know that's not a possibility now, but the question is really if a program is available. They can enroll in that course and follow the requirements of the high school, basically, and then get the credit for the high school. I guess, I guess that's what I'm not understanding. Advanced, I don't know, hypothetically, I'm you're doing geometry here and you're in advanced, which in my mind presumably means you're probably eighth, ninth or tenth grade or whatever. Whenever, whatever grade you're doing geometry in. If, if you can meet the rigor, which is what the D one fifty five policy says about this is, if you're meeting the rigor of it, then you do get, and you can pass that, then you can get it, that credit, but I know that they don't offer it. It just, it doesn't make sense why to limit it, but I just wanted to say that yes, I know we discussed this. I looked into it and it still just doesn't make any sense to me. But consent agenda, I guess, yeah.
Does this close the door, though, so we can revisit that?
Right, if the high school were ever to say, yes, we're willing to give credit, we could come back and put the policy right in. So this one would be, rather than accepting press, we, our recommendation is to still not adopt this policy at this time.
Yep.
Okay. The next one is seven colon seventy. This is attendance intruency. And on page two, they have an added section number fourteen about an approval process for students who attend activities that are allowed under that particular law, meaning that students don't get penalized. So it's things like if they were doing some type of internship or if they were doing some type of dual credit or things like that, they're allowed to do that. They can make up their work at school and they don't get, that doesn't count as an absence toward truancy. So we would recommend accepting that.
Good with consent?
Seven colon one fifty, agency law enforcement requests. On this one, they have rewritten the policy. So we gave you a copy of the old policy, the current, I shouldn't say old, it's the current policy with the new policy. Basically, they have the current policy and pushed it all toward the bottom of the first page and onto the second page. And the top of the first page is really the new section and that has really beefed up information about perceived citi, actual perceived citizenship or immigration status. The bottom line with this is, we have to enroll students that live in our district. The status of their immigration doesn't matter. We still have to provide a safe school environment for them and all students. Any student who is in our district is a student that we educate. So that's in a that's bullets one through six in a very short summary. So we do recommend accepting the rewrite as it's done. And I'm sorry, there was a title change too. This was called agency and police interviews, and now it's called agency and law enforcement requests.
Or good with consent?
Okay, seven one eighty is prevention and response to bullying. So this has a few changes. On page one, there is an addition here, a definition of artificial intelligence that came through the law. And then again, on page two, there are some updates where they just clarified some language, essentially in a couple of places added some information about cyberbullying and definition of digital replica. So that information was added here as well. And we, again, would recommend accepting press.
Are we good with consent?
Seven one ninety, student behavior. I swear this is on the list every single time we ever look at policy because it's a big one. Page six is actually where the change is this time. And the change on here talks about the possible threat of firearms and reporting requirements around the possible threat of firearms. And then having administrators need to reach out to the families of those students if there is even the report of a threat. To find out, let the parents know first of all what they have heard and also to make sure that the student does not actually have access to a firearm. So those are the updates which we do recommend accepting.
Or good with consent?
Was there a redundancy in this about the reporting to the I'm trying to look at it while I speak. The reporting to the local law enforcement there?
Are you in a specific place?
Yeah, under required notices, right? On seven one ninety.
Where's, where's?
I'm looking. So then, okay, that's that's second paragraph, right? That's highlighted green as a, the building, upon receiving the report, the building principal shall immediately notify the law enforcement. Then they notify the superintendent and then receiving the report, the superintendent shall immediately notify local law enforcement. That's like is there like a redundancy a little bit there or no? I mean, it's not bad to have them. I just thought it was. I'm not, I don't have any suggestions to change it. I just thought it was kind of redundant.
Yeah, I mean, I see what you're talking about, that the principal has to, if they find out, has to report it. But the superintendent doesn't always receive that information from the principal. So I think just in all caution, you know, if the person who reported it was Miss Rivera to the superintendent, the superintendent still needs to call. Same with, it might be a principal, it could be an assistant principal. I think just double checking that that has been done because that's a critical feature for the safety aspect. So it, it does, I get what you're saying. It does sound a little redundant, like they're going to report it and I'm going to report it and you're going to, like, somebody's got to report it, so it's more a matter of making sure it's gotten done regardless of where it comes from.
Okay, and then your, thank you for your answer. And then your response sparked it in my head. Building principal. We have vice principals too. Should we do anything about that or just keep it building principal?
That's funny, in the first, where the first change is, it says shall immediately notify the office of the building principal. So that could be the principal or the assistant principal. And then the second one, it says the building principal or designee shall notify. So I think they do cover it just a little bit differently in each of those.
So when you're going to, because this will get, right, this will get updated and then staff will become aware, right?
Right.
It's like, um.
Right, right, with one like this. Yeah, with one like this, we do need to, like, this is something we would include, like, at a staff meeting, so that the principals would let the staff know that this is an update. Because it's something that they need to be aware of to be reporting to the principal or the principal's office. So, yes, on this one, that's one that staff get updated. These also, the almost the entire policy, if not the whole policy, also shows up in all the handbooks. So that information is repeated in the know your schools handbook and then in the school handbooks as well.
Are we good with consent?
Okay, the next one is seven two ninety, suicide and depression awareness and prevention. Just a minor update on page one, that they just reworded how they talk about mental health and illness as opposed to sound mind and healthy or healthy body.
All good with consent?
We're in the final stretch, I promise. Seven three forty, two more. Seven three forty, student records. This has just a very minor change on page one, changing officers, or I'm sorry, yes, officers or officials to professionals.
So I guess my question on this is define professionals.
It could be anybody that works at the police department.
I mean, essentially it could be, the note that press has on why they changed that in numbers two and four was to match the text of the Illinois School Student Records Act. So that's how the language actually appears in the student records. Or the Student Record Act.
It's pretty broad. The board is okay with consent?
I would be more fine if professionals was broken down with what, who that exactly entitles us to give student information to with regards to records.
Well, I don't think it can only be officers.
A hundred percent, but I do think that they need to define, set, uh, set a title on who that really. I mean, these are student records, so I think that that needs to be, you know, defined. This is too broad.
So I think we move this to discussion again next week and maybe we get some information from ISB or whoever that can maybe answer our question.
I'd be happy to put in a call to, it's IASV that does the policy and they have a whole team of attorneys, so I can call over there and ask them. I'm not sure if they'll have an answer just because the purpose is aligning it to the law and, but I can ask if what's included in professions, like if that's defined somewhere else.
Somebody else in all of the school boards had to have asked this question, like, we aren't the only ones, but.
Okay, so we'll put that in section eight and we'll revisit that.
Thank you.
Yeah. And then the final one for today, eight thirty, visitors to and conduct on school property. This is another minor change again on page two. They changed certified to licensed and that is it. So again, we recommend.
Okay, are we good with consent?
Thank you very much.
Hey, next up, we have closed session for the purpose of discussion of minutes of meetings lawfully closed under the Open Meetings Act, whether for purpose of approval by the body of the minutes or semi-annual review of the minutes as mandated by section two dot oh six five ILCS one twenty dash two C twenty one. And for the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance or dismissal of specific employees of the public body. Five ILCS one twenty dash two C one. May have a motion to adjourn to closed session.
So moved.
Any discussion? We take a roll call, please?
Dee Darling?
Yes.
Bridgette Sanlin?
Yes.
Julie Jettie?
Yes.
Catherine Potter?
Yes.
Jason Janzik?
Yes.
And the motion's approved. Open session ends at seven oh five PM. You have a good evening, everyone.